All right, so we have here, we have agenda. I'm gonna ask the town administrator, please, to please read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, the amend or approve the agenda and then public comment. The first item is a consent agenda with four items is payroll warrant, approved draft minutes of March 18th, 2021, April 10th, 2021, April 15th, 2021, April 29th, 2021, and May 25th, 2021. And then select board meeting dates set of June 24th, 2021, and police chief's search committee meeting dates set to be decided. Item two, COVID-19 team update. Item three is conservation commission update with Neil Kessler, the chair. Item four is library state grant anticipation note award to Heidi Doyle, treasurer. Number five is consideration of signing rail trail easement and license as voted at May 15th, 2021, annual town meeting with Gino Carlucci, town planner. Item six, consideration of rail trail ditch restoration at the request of Selman George Morrow. And item seven, consideration of annual appointment process continued. Item eight, consideration of routine business, select board reports, and town administrator reports. And then adjourn to executive session under the following exemptions, and the board will return to open session to adjourn. Item one, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board and the town, and the chair does so declare, to discuss the town library pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DCAM, 449 Massachusetts, 444, year 2007. Item two, review of executive session draft minutes pursuant to MGL Chapter 3A, 30A, Section 21A, 7, and 22G1. Item three, strategy session discussion to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection two, town administrator.
Very good. Thank you. Motion relative to agenda, please.
Move approval. I think you can remove the police search to be determined because not gonna have another.
And I, are we, did we just?
Actually, you know what? Leave that on because we still have to approve minutes. So just leave that on as it is.
And it's in questions.
Are we gonna discuss changing the select board meeting? Didn't Paul have a concern about that?
Well, first, relative to the agenda, then we'll discuss a consent agenda. So right now, I'm just taking the motion relative to the agenda as read by the town administrator.
My bad.
Move approval. Sorry.
Second.
All right, all in favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. Now, Diane, we have no public comment, I believe. Correct? Just nod your head. We have no public comment. No, no one has notified me a public comment. So, um, agenda item number one, do we have a motion or a comment relative to the consent agenda?
So I have a request.
Okay.
Regarding the consent agenda, particularly the board schedule for June 24th. Something has come up which is gonna require me to be elsewhere on June 24th. I haven't missed a select board meeting in seems like a couple of years now. I don't wanna miss a select board meeting. There's only three members of the board then if I'm not there. So I would respectfully request that we move that date to like June 17th, which is a week before, or to another day that week, like the 6th, uh, 23rd, that Wednesday.
I think if it's the 17th or the 24th, it'll still be the first after the election. So, you know, it'll still be, um, I'm fine with, I'm fine with the 17th. I don't have anyone else.
I think typically I don't like to move meetings. I like to have them every two weeks, but this will be the reorganizational meeting. So I think we should have the full five-member board for this meeting in particular. I think if we move it to the 17th, that's only a week from tonight, and I don't know if we'll have much of an agenda. And then we also had talked about move the July meeting to the 15th for, I know Deb had requested that we move it to the 15th and not have it on the 7th. So one idea would be to, I mean, we could wait till July 1st, and then we have a meeting July 1st and July 15th. If we wanna keep it on the Thursday schedule.
I personally like the Thursday schedule. We're about to buy tickets to my brother-in-law's wedding, so the 15th might be a little iffy. I know the 22nd is definitely out for me, but that's still off in the future. So I'm fine.
Well, the 15th was what we talked about with Deb. That's when she needs us to approve the year-end transfers. My 15th was a date that we had talked about at our last meeting with Deb Seifring.
Well, if we're still on Zoom, they have Wi-Fi in Idaho.
Right there.
I think July 1st might be a good choice unless someone, I didn't hear someone had a conflict on July 1st, because we probably, I agree with George, we're not gonna have much for next, a week from today.
Right. Paul, does July 1st work for you?
As long as remote participation is allowed, yes. I'll be on vacation that week, but if I can participate via Zoom, you know, the authority for Zoom meetings expires on the 15th of June. We are working to extend that. This bill's pending. The issue isn't whether, is not whether it'll be extended, but whether the legislature can enact something
In time.
in a timely way. So they may or may not have enacted it by.
Well, it's interesting, by the way, that the NPL Metropolitan Organization has actually extended their next meeting till July 1st strictly for that reason, to allow the Zoom extension of the Zoom allowance. So I think the first seems like a safe time.
I'll move to move the June 24th meeting to July 1st.
Second.
All right. All in favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi, and thank you.
Absolutely. Shut that down. Okay, so with that now, do we have a motion relative to, uh, so that was that, that motion wasn't approved. That just moved it. So let's just, to be safe, motion relative to the consent agenda?
Yeah, I moved that we approve the consent agenda as modified with the item three select board meeting date being 7/1/21.
Got it. And now second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. Thank you very much. Just to keep that clean. All right, next up is a COVID team update. I believe Zach is unavailable at this time. Is there anyone else? Is, um?
Just me, I think. I mean, I attended the meetings on Monday. I had to leave after half hour, but I was on a COVID meeting. So a couple of things, we're no longer meeting with Dover till the end of summer because school is kind of winding down. So that the joint Dover Sherburne meeting will resume in late August, so just so we make sure we confirm any opening plans for the fall. Because one thing that's going on now, as you're all aware, is the vaccination of children between the ages of 12 and, I think, 17. And Moderna has, Pfizer's approved, and Moderna is submitting, I think, this week their request to be approved for that age group also. There was also, I don't know if you guys saw it in the paper, it's looking like the, I was kinda worried because I got the J&amp;J one. I didn't know how protected I was with one shot. But it turns out, it looks like it may be slightly more protective against some of the variants. So it's kind of an interesting outcome. Obviously not confirmed. So one of the biggest discussion items was, you know, how, what are we gonna do with virtual meetings? You know, they're, they're all hoping that we can continue virtual meetings through at least Labor Day. We'll have to see how that works out. The problem, everyone seems to wanna go with hybrid, but we have IT issues in town hall, so I'm not sure. We'll have to do some reckoning to figure out how we'll do hybrid Zoom meetings. If some people in the community are, you know, still participating by Zoom. Now, it turns out Zoom is adding all kinds of new features because they obviously don't wanna lose their business model. So they're adding these group rooms. I got an invitation to a training class tomorrow. They're adding group rooms and all, all kinds of other features to hopefully not lose three-quarters of their business in the next month. So that's going on there. Another thing with COVID is we're still looking at reconfiguring town hall because in order to reopen it, we have bought a little bit of time because we can't reopen due to the front steps, obviously. But we'll have to figure out what we're doing with the layout of town hall and departments and everything. And there may still be, we talked about this, and the library's doing this already, some people that still feel comfortable having, you know, a town employee bring something out to the parking lot, like the library's letting people in now. But they, if you don't feel comfortable, they'll still, if you call in advance or email, they'll bring the books out to the parking lot for you to pick up. So we have to figure out how to reopen town services concurrent with reconfiguring town hall in the front steps and with the governor's legislature's decision on virtual meetings. So that's all I can think of. Anybody have any questions?
I mean, I had heard, I don't know if it can be confirmed or not, that for the available adults that are, what, qualify for the vaccine, Sherburne has something like a 90-95% vaccination rate, and I think that's definitely plausible.
Yeah, it's very, very high.
And I'll tell you, just anecdotally from my kids, like my kids have their first vaccine, they're getting their second vaccine on Saturday. My daughter turned 12, and we got her the vaccine the next day in May. A lot of their friends, I mean, just from hearing them, like their kids, the kids are all, a lot of kids in Dover and Sherburne are getting vaccinated as soon as they can.
Yeah, I think that's the sense, because I'll fill you in later under select board reports, but we had an in-person graduation ceremony last Thursday with no masks. And a few people wore masks, but virtually none. And, you know, there's around 135 graduates, and I bet you there's close to 1,000 people there. So it was kind of a big ceremony.
And we all saw, unfortunately, we're not gonna see any more Bruins games, but the garden was packed for all those games.
I know, I know. All right.
All right.
That's only update I have.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Jeff. And like I said, it sounds like as a community, we're in pretty good shape there. All right, so moving on, agenda item number three, conservation commission update. I see Neil Kessler is here.
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead, Neil.
Thank you. If you're okay with it, I can, is it, can I share my screen?
Yeah, sure. Hang on a second. Okay.
All right, let me just see if this'll work.
Yeah, you should be, you should be good now, Neil.
All right, can you see it?
Yep, perfect.
Wonderful. All right, so I'm, I'm coming to you out of need. I wish I had, was coming to you with good news, but I'm coming to you with, with a situation that's arisen with the conservation agent position. And we're sort of getting into a place where what's been going on with the agent position has just become kind of unsustainable for us as a commission. So I just wanted to run you through a few slides just to kind of show you what's been going on. So, let me just see if this'll, there we go. Okay. So just, just to give you, get you up to date on kind of what the current state of the conservation commission is. We have been operating without a permanent agent for about five months or for over five months. The last job posting, not the current one, but the last one, which was at 19 hours without any benefits, yielded one somewhat qualified applicant who we hired and then resigned after four weeks. That person gave us the feedback that the workload at 19 hours was just too heavy. We've gone ahead again and posted the job, the same thing, 19 hours, no benefits. It's been active for three weeks, and we've had one applicant. And right now, the way the commission's operating is we're really relying on three people to do the agents' work. And what is that work? As you know, we have 800 acres of conservation land that's facing increased pressure. COVID has really changed use of our open space in town. We've had heavy use of our conservation parcels that have resulted in everything from structural damage to, at Leland Mill Pond, you can see the picture in the corner of a dumped piece of furniture. We've had a lot of trouble with unauthorized mountain bike trail construction in places that are, you know, they're not existing trails, they're digging holes, they're making jumps, and we've had a real time, or a real hard time just kind of getting that under control. And, you know, we really wanna encourage people to get out and enjoy conservation land. We think it's one of the gems of life in Sherburne. But we need help just kind of keeping it safe and enjoyable. The other thing that's been going on is we've seen a real sharp increase over the last few years in NOI applications. A lot of people are doing a lot more work on their houses. COVID has kind of accelerated that. But you can see from 2018 to our projected 2021 numbers that, you know, we're looking at quadrupling the number of NOI applications we're processing every year. So again, more pressure on us. And I talked earlier about three people doing the job of the agent, and what's happened is we're doing it as agent by committee. So I went back and looked at the average weekly hours in May devoted to agents' duties. And we have Joyce Hastings, who we had hired when, when Alary left in the beginning of the year. And she in May did about 10 hours a week. As a temporary agent, Elizabeth Laracy, our administrative assistant, is doing almost 30 hours. And then Jean Bedner, who's our vice chair, who's been donating her time, is also doing about 10 hours a week. So it's about, it's almost 50 hours of work a week that we're facing right now. And Jean and Joyce both have businesses of their own that they're kind of making sacrifices to just to keep the commission afloat. We're also worried about legal risks, like what if we miss a deadline? What if somebody asks for help or coordination or asks for another commitment from us? We had something from DPW come across, and I'm thinking, where are we gonna fit all this stuff? And so we're really just at a point where things have become unsustainable for us in this current configuration. And one thing that I wanted to just show you is that last year, Jean did a bit of research when we were looking at, you know, management of conservation land against processing of applications, like our regulatory duties versus our land management duties. And she went out and looked at a bunch of different towns, and one thing she found was that almost, well, all of them had a full-time agent, and a lot of them had extra help on top of it. So Ashland was just 160 acres of conservation land, you can see, has a full-time agent, although they don't have an assistant. But then Medway had only 560 acres of conservation land, have a full-time agent, part-time assistant. Sherburne, which is now at 800 acres, part-time agent, part-time assistant, and on and on. And the rest of the towns, you know, they have really no fewer than three people working on this stuff, and most of them are paid positions. So just amongst these towns, we are really the only town that has a part-time agent. And so, you know, we've, it's hard. We're trying to go out and advertise and get somebody really qualified. And I didn't put this slide up so you could try to read the job description, but you can see it's almost three pages long. So when candidates start to look at the job and they see something like this, there's a lot of responsibilities and a lot of qualifications. It just doesn't read like a part-time job. And, and it's, as it's turning out, as you can see, it's not really been a part-time job for, for a period of time. So for us, the big realization is, you know, we have had a conservation agent that was a benefited position with more hours in the past a long time ago, but it, it did exist. There's now more work than a part-time agent can handle, and it's just getting worse. And then we really feel like we've talked about it internally and a little bit with other folks. And we just really feel like to attract the right kind of candidate, this really should be a full-time benefited position, that it's really critical to get the right people, as evidenced by the fact that we've had very, very little interest in our jobs, the last two postings, actually. So that's the state of things. And so what I wanted to do is present to you what was going on with us and just ask for your help here. So I, obviously, this, I mean, this is, this is our request, and I'd like to, I'm happy to talk to you about it. But we really would request that the select board authorize on a temporary basis us to go out and try to hire somebody at 35 hours with benefits, you know, until such time as we have to go through whatever mechanism, whether it's town meeting or through another mechanism, to get this, this position approved permanently as 35 hours and benefited. And so we're looking for almost like an emergency authorization, so we can do it temporarily to just get the workload off of people, and we can get sort of back in a groove of servicing the town as we need to.
All right, I'll take it to the, up to the board here. Any comments from the board, please? And if you could, if you could, unshare your screen, please, just so I can.
Absolutely. Happy to do it. Hold on a second. I'm gonna figure out, there we go. There we go.
I have a question and comments a little bit. Number one, I don't know, I've never heard of a situation where the select board can make this decision. I think it's a town's decision. You can't. That's something that's in the budget. I mean, that's, that's a question. Is it something we can even do? I think that's something that the townspeople have to vote on employees. And number two, I mean, this may be controversial, but I've gotta bring it up because I've seen complaint letters after complaint letters after complaint letters about the conservation commission and them being overbearing and asking too much. And does that just put too much on the agent? And, you know, they, for an example, we had this turf field that came up that was never even presented to the conservation commission. They decided to have their own meeting and make comments on it. I just, I, I've heard a lot about the conservation commission and their actions, and it's not just from one person, it's from multiple people. And I just wonder if a lot of that falls on the agent, and I just wanna bring that up. Sorry if it's offensive or.
No, it's certainly not offensive, but I guess I'm caught a little bit by surprise because I've never heard any feedback given to the commission about complaints. I had no idea that people thought, I mean, nobody likes the conservation commission because they have to get permission from us to do work in jurisdictional areas. But I, I, what, I, what complaints? I mean, I'm just curious why this hasn't been shared with us.
The, we've had a complaint to the select board. We had a letter from somebody complaining about somebody sitting outside their property, watching for them as they built a proper, built a horse farm. And they've, we've had, we've had, I've just talking to friends, they're like, oh, we've had to place plants, and thank God for Alary because she actually was easy to work with. And, and it's just, I heard, somebody said, as an example, this is just a citizen. They bring it up with me because they know I, I work with the town, and they said, we told the conservation, this is a few years ago, so it may not even be relative to people that are on the conservation commission now, but we were told to plant these plants. I told them, those are not gonna work there. They made me plant them anyway. They died, then they made me plant them again. And it's just, I feel like sometimes, these are, and this is not just once that I've heard about conservation commission and, and how they treat some of the citizens in town. And I think a lot of that falls on the agent, so the agents may be doing a lot more work than they would if the conservation worked with people a little easier.
Well, so, so if you don't mind, I'd like to respond to that. So if there have been any kind of complaints with any merit, I certainly think the commission ought to be given the opportunity to respond to them because, I mean, otherwise, if there is something we're being overbearing about, which I, I don't think we have, but if there is, then certainly we'd like the opportunity to respond to it, and we'd like the opportunity to improve. I mean, any, any town body can improve. As far as the person sitting outside the house, I already know what that is because that's a person who became very combative, spent a year. They, they trucked in 440 yards of fill, filled in demarcated wetlands, and certainly had their own perspective on, on what had happened. And in fact, I did quite a thorough investigation of the communication she had with our agent, and, and it was certainly not, I would, I don't, I don't know what she said because I certainly, like I said, I have not seen the letter. But I, that's why I say, like, to say that, okay, well, you know, poor agent, you know, it's really this overbearing commission. I, I don't think it's fair because we haven't really had an opportunity to address any of those things. And I don't think we should, I don't think it should be taken out on us in this way.
I also, I hold up a second. I just wanna rein in. I don't, I don't wanna make this too much of a form because it could go, you know, start going on a certain path. We certainly, we understand, I think a select board member has concerns on overall activity of the, of the, of the commission that can be taken through another route. I wanna stick to the merits of a full-time agent or moving, moving toward a full-time agent. Maybe that contributes to it, but just, I worry about, just bring up a million examples and.
That's fine.
And do what have you. Jeff, please.
Well, so I'm sort of adding on to George's point and agreeing with it is so, the very, because this isn't in your budget. I mean, we just approved the budget, you know, two weeks ago. You would, we would, I think the first step would be go to advisory, as George says, advisory would do an analysis of it and, and look at what the options are. So I think that that, you should schedule that. One thought is, and now, I actually am in favor of having benefit positions in general, just because I like people to have the benefits. And probably, I, I feel without documentation that people leave, you know, we have more turnover if we don't offer benefits, is what I would say. Although, on the other hand, I'm speaking, I can usually have a debate with myself without a president, is if we, if you think of it, if we only have 19 hours, that, that's how many hours a person could be in the office there. And they're probably out in the field at least a third of that time. So if you actually hired two people at 19 hours, you wouldn't be paying benefits to anyone, but you'd be all of a sudden getting more office coverage that way. So I'm not, I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying that advisory needs to also look at a possibly, maybe it ends up being two 16-hour person jobs. It also gives you more flexibility so that if someone's on vacation or someone's sick, or you have someone leave like this, you're not stranded with a one-person position. So there's, there's obviously cons to that, too. So I don't view that as, you know, deciding factor, because if, if they decide to leave because they don't have benefits, you, you haven't solved that. So one thing I would definitely suggest is that maybe, because we just said we're gonna meet next on July 1st, that maybe you could meet with advisory. And I'm not sure, you probably have a dedicated person that works with conserva, usually advisory assigns someone. So I think that would be a good start because they could also advise us on what, look at the options and what a projected cost would be. Because the only way to pay for it is with a reserve fund transfer.
Okay.
But we'd have to look at that. We have around $300,000, I think, in reserve funds, so we would have to do a reserve fund transfer to cover it. So anyway, so I think that would be a good starting point. And going back to the accusation, the only thing I'll say, though, is that I attended the meeting that Neil referred to, and I was there. So I saw, I can't even remember why I was there. I wasn't there for that item. It was the item before, before I wanted to, the one I was there for. So I, I know that there was a discussion with this particular case in town. So I, whether there were complaints, I have heard that there were complaints, but I know that it was discussed with, with everybody, you know, presenting their perspective in that one meeting. So just to be fair.
I'd like to record it. Paul, please.
Yeah, I could. Yeah, absolutely. A couple, a couple of points. First, I wanna emphasize how critically important it is to the community that the conservation commission function and function well. They have two different roles here that were mentioned. One is the 800 acres of open space, which we all enjoy. But the other is preserving our environment, groundwater, wetlands, all of those things. They report that an unbenefited position is not attracting candidates. So Jeff's solution about hiring two, when they can't, what I just heard was their advertisement for a non-benefited position produced one candidate for which they have no options and no choices. You can't hire two people when there's only one applicant. The problem doesn't get solved by having more people at an unbenefited position. The idea was, let's try a better position to see if that attracts more people. If a benefited position produces no candidates, then that's one consequence. But the odds are it's gonna produce a better pool of applicants from which the conservation commission can get the help that it needs. It seems clear from the slides we just looked at. They need help. You can't have volunteers who are on the, the commission, who are unpaid, doing the work of paid employees, or what should be the work of paid employees, and giving up their own businesses and their own income. I mean, my hat's off to that kind of volunteerism, and that's truly an amazing thing. But it's not right that we ask volunteers to put themselves into that kind of situation. And speaking as a lawyer, it's really important that the conservation commission get it right. And to get it right, they need to have good people to get it right, and the time to address things to get it right. So things don't fall between the cracks, things are done in the rush. The public is better off, the. Government is better off. And the commission is better off. With a competent person who knows what they're doing. To assist this border committee. I also know just as a legal footnote here. That positions can be altered during the course of a year. On a temporary basis. As long as they are presented. To town meeting and confirmed. At town meeting next year. So a change can be made now. And it goes to town meeting. If the voters say no on a benefited position. Then. That's up to the voters. But in the meantime. I believe the select board should be leaders. Should not defer this to advisory. Advisory role is where to find the money. But I think our role. Is sort of the managers and as chief executives of the town. Is to make sure that the governmental functions are getting done. And based on the report that we've heard, a major regulatory board. Needs help. I don't think that we should. Do anything other than support that request. Let them go to advisory, but with. A, an embrace from. The select board. So that advisory knows. That we concur. And that we're showing some leadership here. About what should be done to make sure that this commission. Serves the public.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Now I see Michael Lester's hands raised, but before I recognize him, right, Elias, when I be able to say, uh, just my own, um. Uh, opinion here on the board. And, uh, I do agree, you get better candidates and you get more candidates with a more hour and a benefited position. Um, I know there's been a pressure to go to, um, nineteen hours for many positions around town. Um, really because honestly, our, um, our pension liability is getting, you know, even worse. And at least last stat I saw, which has been about a year is that we're still some of the worst in the state, at least in eastern Massachusetts. On our pension liabilities. So I do think it, it's not a small deal. It is a big deal to actually, uh, to make a move like this. If it's warranted, it's warranted. Um, I fully believe in that. I'm, I'm a little leery on making a vote right now based on one presentation. I would like to at least do some real deep dive and, and bring this up in the next select board meeting, which unfortunately we pushed a week. Um, and I know it doesn't help the, the Conservation Commission on the short term. I'm just leery on just, you know, seeing a presentation and not that it was a bad presentation, it was a good presentation, Neil. But just, you know, um, you know, seeing this and it's being like, oh, okay, full-time vote for it. It's, it's kind of a big deal. It is. I mean, during, um, we do town meeting budgets. And we talk about, you know, nineteen verse thirty-five, we talk about them for hours. I spent an entire Saturday talking about them. You know, it, 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 it is a big deal. So I just want a little bit more time to adjust and get a bit more info and maybe even talk to, to, um, some people on the commission. Uh, before, before I make a vote, just, you know, see a presentation and vote. I may support it. I just, I just want to know a bit more and I, I didn't feel a little uneasy just, uh, making such a quick vote right now. So at least that's where I stand on this. And, um, you know, I, I do see people's point, like I said, with the thirty-five hours. I, um.
I just ballparked and came up with around seventy thousand dollars potentially for this, for, for a full calendar.
Pension liability? Yeah.
No, no, for the, uh, extra hours.
Yeah, I'm more of a pension liability person. I am.
Yeah.
The budget, but, um, Michael Lesser has nicely used his electronic hand, which we all know I, I put favorite system towards. So. And he's had it up for a while. So I would like to recognize Michael and then I'll bring it back, uh, to the board. Hi, Michael.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street and the Conservation Commission. Um. I guess since I raised my hand, some of the points have been raised. I was. Wanted to agree with Paul and the fact of the process. That essentially since we're underneath the select board. We have to basically come to you and, and. Work out some sort of recommendation. About the level of employment of this and such before we go to advisory. Because it's basically, we need to have a recommendation from you that you support whatever we go to advisory in order for advisory, I think, to, to rule. Uh, on us. So I support the process that Paul talked about there and, uh. And I agree, we have to come back to you with some more budget option details in terms of the mix of, uh. Of, of an agent and what it means to the administrative position. And what trade-offs there are there so that we can give you some numbers. Um, against that kind, those kinds of mixes there. Um, and we have to think about what level. Of support there. In the past, we actually had a thirty-two hour position or thirty-hour position. Um, and. And whether that still requires benefits. It has a little less budget implication in the, in the meanwhile. So we have to think about that, but also whether that also means you could still get the kind of applicant pool that you want, whether a thirty versus a thirty-five. Makes a difference in that. So we can come back and some scenarios there. Um, and then I'll just finish up with. Um, I guess I'd like to have a. A process by which issues, I'm going to shift to something that's a little. For a future agenda on of issues of whether there's complaints about the Conservation Commission. That there's some sort of. Uh, more regular way in which those kinds of issues are discussed rather than festering. Because we do have. Um, probably five to ten significant violations in a year. So there's always going to be people complaining. And there are always, and there are always people every year who do. Significant violation of the wetland regulations that are state level as well as local. And so there's always going to be that kind of friction. That you can hear about because there are people who just don't agree and don't follow them. Um, or even after the fact. Uh, we do a lot of work. People to work with them and they didn't, they did a violation inadvertently. And we have a lot of very harmonious resolutions of those things there, but there are ones that don't always go so well. And doesn't take too many of them to make it sound like there's a lot going on. We deal with. Probably a hundred households or more in a year. If you think of how many, when you deal with a hundred people, different households in a year and have five or ten people who are not particularly pleased or somewhat. Have disgruntled, I would say that that would not be a surprising number. Given the huge volume of the town that we deal with, given the pre- the pre- the presence of wetlands on almost everybody's property. And so therefore. I would like, not like to be, like to, people understand the bigger picture than just the fact that yes, there are. Things that don't go well. Sometimes we do make mistakes and we correct them. Um, and we're always open to, to working with people. We spend a lot of hours working with people. I try to make things work. So therefore, uh. I would like to, when there are real complaints that people come and find a way to talk to us about it. So that it doesn't fester. And I'm more than happy to meet with George or anybody else at times, so that, because it always gets difficult to figure out how to. Do those things. But I'd like to make that a more formal request that we do that. So that we don't have these kind of generalizations at a meeting like this. And so, um. More than open to find a way to do that on a very, on a specific basis. So we actually do improve. And we understand, have a better understanding of each other. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, George, please. Uh, I, I, George should have his hand raised before and then I'll recognize Paul right after that.
I agree, Michael. I think, one, the, one thing I do want to bring up is. Um, I've, I'm, it's actually good to see both Michael and Neil here because I know. Most nights Conservation has meetings at the same exact time as us.
Yes.
Wanted to go on your meetings before, or you've, and, and I don't, and I know somebody brought this up before that. At one point in town, people couldn't schedule meetings the same night as select board meetings and. It, because I'm also missed a whole bunch of ZBA hearings that I wanted to be at this spring. And, and I don't like the idea that selectmen who want to be informed on a lot of different issues in town can't go to meetings. I don't, I can't come to any of your meetings. So I think we need to work on maybe some scheduling and Michael, I completely agree. Maybe it wasn't the right forum for me to bring this up tonight. But it's the first time I've seen you guys as a conservation commission. So. Um, we should, we, if we get complaints, we should bring them directly to you. And that's my bad. I should, I should bring that directly to you if I hear from. Some of it is anecdotally. If you're talking to somebody and they're like, oh, you wouldn't believe what the Conservation Commission made me go through. And I mean, maybe talking to you, you'd, I'd get more clarification of what actually happened. But I, I do have concerns just because it is a recurring theme. And one night, you know, sitting around a fire with ten guys, seven of them had to complain about the Conservation Commission. So. I mean, that was, that's just, but that wasn't my point, sorry. I really wanted to talk about the process. I disagree completely with Paul that we're saying we're going to push it off to advisory. That's not what we're saying. We're saying this is a budget issue. This is, a budget was just approved by the legislative body of this town, which is the citizens. It's not up to the select board to make that change. We can recommend a reserve fund transfer and it's not responsible to spend money and then say, hopefully at the end of the year, the town will approve it. But last year we talked about this with the senior center wanted forty thousand and. People said, hey, maybe we should just spend this and we'll just do a transfer at the end of the year. Guess what? It got voted down when we asked people. So it's not just assumed that we as the executive board can make that decision because it does come back to the legislative body and letting the people. Decide on these things. We do have the discretion of the reserve fund transfer that we share with. The advisory committee, and I think that's what's appropriate. We need to have the numbers presented to us. As Michael said, you guys will come back to us with. Numbers. And if those numbers make sense, we can then. Give you our blessing to go to advisory, as you said, because conservation falls under the select board, but I didn't see any numbers tonight. So I think. It's premature to look at it.
Right. And Paul, um, uh, you, you're next. Go ahead.
Thanks, Eric. I wanted to address this idea of complaints. Most towns, when they receive complaints, forward them to. The board committee or official. So I would request that anytime a complaint comes in. That it be automatically. Sent. To the, whatever board or committee, I'm not limiting it to the Conservation Commission. Somebody has a complaint about the planning board, somebody has a complaint about the Board of Appeals, somebody has a complaint about the Conservation Commission. Or even the Board of Select. That should go to those boards. First, they need to know. What the complaint is. Perhaps there are some improvements that can be made. Perhaps the complaint has merit, perhaps the complaint doesn't have merit. Perhaps they want to respond to it. But not by not giving it to them. That I think thwarts the purpose of the complaint. And prevents continuous improvement, which should be a goal of good management. So I would respectfully request that any and all complaints that come in. Be automatically sent to the different boards and committees. And I would add one further piece to that. Which is, I think that the select board members should automatically get copies of those complaints. So for example, if. If during the course of a year. I get a hundred complaints about one board and no complaints about another board, that tells me something. So I would respectfully suggest. Like there was a reference to a letter that came in. That that letter. Be scanned and sent to the select board members. And be delivered to the board committee who's the subject of the complaint. And if that board committee responds to it. A copy of that response should go to us too. That way we can. Get a sense of what's going on.
That the. Oh, that letter was addressed to all of us and you got a copy of it. Every one of us got a copy of it. I was on the select board. You've always been on the select board as long as I have. So. Every selectman got that letter.
Again, I'm just going to control a little bit about, you know, the complaint issues and maybe if we want, we can actually have that whole separate discussion. And take a summary of whatever complaints have rolled in, but I sense this going down certain levels of detail that might not be completely applicable to the, um. Increased hours of a conservation agent. Sorry, Paul. Is, uh, Paul, are you, are you done, Paul? I didn't want to cut you off. Okay.
Well, just a sort of a final point, which was that. The more competent people. You have professional staff helping. A board or committee. The likelihood of complaints is likely to go down.
Very good. Uh, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I'm still, uh, uh, recommending that we let advisory, that's what they're doing. They're advising us. They're not making a decision. They're giving us the data. I'm wondering now if, uh. Given, I know that they're right because I sit on the board of health meetings because you could do that there on Wednesday. There's a huge influx of demand right now for projects. So I'm wondering if there's a way to hire an engineering consulting firm on a part-time basis. So we don't have an agent, we're not spending money on their salary. And this could, even if we make it a benefited position, it could still take a couple of months to find someone, interview them and hire them. Is there any way that we could get some engineering consulting services to fill the gap? Just, I'm not expecting you to answer that now, but I think that maybe you could explore that with advisory. Because if it does take a while for you to find a qualified candidate, it sounds like it's a more dire situation, Neil. So I would. Suggest if that's at all feasible, uh, unless you think it would be too hard for them to get up to speed. It might be worth considering.
Yeah, I, I mean, w- w- we can have some discussions about it. Some of that experience might be applicable to the work that we need to do. Some of it might not.
Yeah.
And we, and we do have the temporary agent. It's more of like. There's only so much we can get from her. And our administration. The people that have been stepping in have been doing yeoman's work and it's, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, bailing wire and chewing gum and we're, we're trying to get through it, but. It's just, there's, there's, we're out, we're out now five months of it. And that's where it's starting to, you know, i- in a stopgap way, you can do it, but we're sort of getting to that point. So.
No.
I'm not sure if an engineering firm is going to help, especially if it's short-term. Um, but I understand it's a good point of trying to get.
Give you some reason, even if they're someone that she can direct. It could be a junior-level person or I don't know what.
Right.
A university professors in environmental engineering. I don't know, but whatever you think.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we'll talk about it because I think the idea of even temporarily some, you know, an additional consultant of some kind. Which has the expertise is not a bad idea. Uh, so we will talk about it.
Especially, uh, I would, I do want to add though, especially on a surge or especially, like I said, a stopgap. Um, and, um, I, I would buy, it'd be a lot easier in the short term to allocate funds, um, for a consultant basis because that's a little easier. One of the things is. So let's say we approve thirty-five hours even now or whatever. And then you say it's temporary and then it has to go to the next town meeting. That's actually more. Uh, that simplifies a little bit too much because then tell me he's laying someone off. Once you have a qualified person and getting benefits at thirty-five hours a week. It's kind of a, a big deal just to end that position, which is why I think it just takes a little bit more thought. And I'd like to just. At least, you know, defer one meeting to get a little more of a deep dive on this. So my opinion, I mean, it's the same on that there. I like the idea of a consultant though. And David has something to say.
Yeah. Well, I've talked to Neil for a couple of months now and, um. I had already been sold that they needed to have a full-time person or at least advertised with benefits. Um, you and I talked about that, Neil. And so, um. I'd actually, I think, one, one time told you, let's post it and hire it. Um, and the, the reason is, it's. Neil doesn't need, um, to ask the select board about. To hire it because they already have the authority to hire. It's, it's all comes down to the money, the support for asking for that money. Um, and then in the bylaw for these kinds of mid-year changes, like Paul was saying. You know, it comes to me as a reclassification of any position or the job description or the pay rate. And. I go to the personnel board, get that approval. And then it goes to town meeting at the next town meeting that comes around, whether it's a. Special town meeting or the annual town meeting. And that's, that's at the point that it's been involved in the budget discussions for dollars. Um, in the meantime, um, you know, funding it, he already, he has funding for the position to a certain level. We would have to do, um. Some sort of transfer. Either a reserve fund transfer or from some other department that, uh, isn't using a position. So, um. From the operational needs that we had discussed and that I've seen with the people who have left and talked to them and, um, talking to these folks. Um, for the time that they're putting in. Uh, yeah, it's too much to ask of, it's too much to ask of someone. They also need response. Basically twenty-four, seven. Um, you need to be able to call that person in the evening or the morning or outside of those hours or on the weekends. Um, and that demand. You can't do that with a nineteen-hour position and expect that it's going to. Turn out okay. It's just, it's, it's a short-term thing that will, you know, last only short-term. So, um, the operational needs are there. Uh, what Neil wants is support for the, um, you know, at some point to be. Doing a reserve fund transfer probably. If I can identify another position to switch to. But, uh. Operationally. They've definitely made the case that they need, um, more hours. So if you notice the way that it was posted, um. I think we posted it up to. Nineteen, nineteen hours with potentially up to thirty-five hours with benefits. Um, in order to try to. Nineteen hours with potentially up to thirty-five hours with benefits, in order to try to attract people. So I still want to give it a couple of more weeks closer to the deadline before, before I throw in the towel and say that. The benefits didn't attract anyone, but, because I think it will in the next, I think it will in the next couple of weeks. But then they have already gone the route of the consultants and the, you know, the interim temp agent, so. I just wanted to voice that I've talked to Neil about it and I fully support expanding those hours because it. They have justified it in my eyes.
If you've talked about it for months, why wasn't it brought up during budget season that we just approved a budget less than a month ago? It's kind of ridiculous that we're talking about it now, that's my point.
It's been.
Talked about it two months ago, if you knew about it two months ago.
Wasn't two months ago.
Well, you just said, we talked to Neil over the last two months.
About, yeah, when he came to me about posting the position, I think that's when.
Saying it's a frustrating time, we're not even at the end of the fiscal year yet, and you're asking. That's just for my time of advisory, that's just.
I know. If you look at the bylaw, it's. I'm telling you that it's asking me to make a decision on operational needs, and that's what Neil and I did. He's coming looking for support to ask for that money somehow.
We have, we have, I think, I, honestly, and actually, I do appreciate, anyways. Now the name's coming, is that Gene Bednor raising a hand? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Gene Bednor, Bogusobrick Road, speaking. As a conservation commission member, but also the former agent, I was the agent for nine years. Just to the comment about the timeliness of this request, we submitted our budget as we were asked to in December. Before Ellery resigned, and she resigned almost immediately after that, and. So we're talking about a situation that happened after the budget was. Budget was submitted. I, I commented to Neil on the title of his presentation that I thought it might be. Like overly dramatic, but I feel that I have to just say one dramatic thing here that. You know, as somebody who's contributing a lot of hours because I care deeply about what's going on with wellness protection. We are hanging by a thread, so, and, and also just to comment about Joyce Hastings, who is our. Interim agent, she is a qualified professional engineer, she is a principal of GLM engineering. And she has, out of the kindness of her heart, been accepting the same hourly rate. As the conservation agent earns in Sherburne, when in fact, you know, as an engineer. Her hourly rate would be much higher than that, so. I just wanted to make those points.
Thanks, Jean.
Michael, who's raising your physical hand, can you also put your electronic hand down, just because it actually freezes up the ability of.
No, no, I raised it again, I had it down.
Okay, you put it down after you talk, I'll recognize you right now and you can put it down.
Sorry, I was trying to do the process, but I couldn't tell how you do it.
I thought it was still left up from before.
No, I turned it off and then I turned it back on. But I'll turn it off now when I'm speaking. The, yes, we're looking at options, we do have other consultants that we'll have to bring on. To, and it just partially depends on what the transition path is in terms of what level we hire and whether people show up. And apply for the job, and it gets, and it gets complicated, I can see this is gonna be. A difficult thing of where you can have. People who apply, who aren't welch, who are, don't have a lot of experience, we hire them at a much lower rate and train them. And then do something that we did years ago, which took a lot of effort with personnel. Board is that you start somebody a bit lower, and then you have fairly significant salary increases over a three-year period or something like that as somebody gets trained up. And those are something that we might have to face, and hopefully it won't be as onerous as it was when. As a treasurer back then, many years ago, I went through that process of, and each year it was like. Why does the salary have to go up by five or ten percent? It's like, we started it much lower and then. And, and this person's getting trained, but that's, those are one of maybe some other alternatives. That we can be a little more creative about and explore, in terms of going forward on this thing and also meeting some budgetary. Issues there, but yes, we do have other consultants that we're probably gonna have to call on, that are probably be quite cost-effective.
Okay, I see Neil, and after that, I'm gonna bring it right back, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, because I think. I think we can bring this a resolution, but okay, Neil.
Yeah, I just, I was gonna sort of try to pull a summary thread through this as well, so. And then, you know, the board obviously can respond to what I'm saying, but basically, to me, what it sounds like would be the best avenue is we can do a multi-pronged approach. I think we can internally sort of analyze some options, as Michael suggested, in terms of costs and what we'd be looking at. I think there's no harm in us reaching out to advisory, to Drew, and, you know, potentially others, just to sort of talk about what we are talking about. To David's point, we have been talking about it in the last couple of months because we've been trying to figure out a way. And while I think our ad of saying there's a possibility for full-time is better than not saying that. It's still, certain applicants are gonna look at and say, what does that mean, and maybe go on, so I think the more sort of. The more confidently we can post the position as being thirty-five hours and benefited, the more benefit that's gonna be in terms of our candidate pool. And then I guess the last thing I would say is, is really to echo Jean's point about the budget is. You know, I think honestly, it really just dawned on us as we went to go back to the drawing board after our last agent resigned. That maybe this was how we were going about it was not working, we started to really just sort of dive in and assess how many hours we're going in. I just put those main numbers together on the hours from Jean and Joyce and Elizabeth, and so. This is really, it's almost like, you know, you, you do something for long enough and you suddenly realize, oh my God, like, I'm, you know. I'm a frog being boiled here, and I'm just realized it, and so I think that's really the point we've gotten to where it's like. This isn't gonna work for much longer, everybody's sort of suddenly saying, or not suddenly saying, but it just comes to a head, and I just think that's where we are, so I think we can. Go do our homework, I think we can come back to you at the next meeting and really present what we found, and if David is. Is, is right in that it's an operational thing, and, and we're asking for your sort of blessing or, or. You know, willingness to do a reserve fund transfer, that's great, we're fine to work within whatever mechanism. Is gonna make the most sense and is gonna, you know, pass muster with the town eventually.
Okay, very good. So is there any comments from the board? It sounds like, you know, we've now at least been given notice on this, and I think it's good to have this official notice. And that, at least I'll put on the agenda for the, for the, for the next select board meeting, and we'll see where we stand from there. And I'm also gonna keep all of my, I'm gonna actually talk to the commission members and keep this kind of a more tune this myself. And if anyone else has any thoughts on that themselves, Paul?
I just wanted to say that where a member of the board, namely Eric Johnson, asks for more time. I believe we should always accommodate. The members of the board, we are a team, and if somebody wants to do homework and spend more time studying it, then I. Completely support that, always will, regardless of the merits of the position or the. My own personal views on what we ought to be doing, so I concur with the notion of. Of giving you all the time that you feel you need to have Eric to. Address this issue and support, you're putting it off to another meeting for further action.
Thank you.
Two other minor points, you know, one is, we may have a fall town meeting, so if we have to get, we can get concurrence from the voters. In the fall perhaps, there, you probably can't reach out to Drew, because he may be a board of assessor by next week, Neil, by next Tuesday.
Now, did either George or Jeff, did you want to make any suggestions about advisory?
I think they should come back here, as I said, I think, like you said, it makes sense, Eric, to put it off until we see the numbers.
Okay, things like that. Okay, I don't think there's any further action, and I thank you, Neil, also for being cooperative with this, you talked about. Giving us a little more time, and I'd also like to see how this, as David mentioned, how the advertisement plays out over the next couple of weeks.
Well, thank you for your time, everybody, appreciate it.
And thank you for the, thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
I actually have to admit, I did not realize it was that serious, and I always appreciate staffing, everyone knows I have a personal association with staffing. And hiring professional staff, because volunteer boards really are supposed to balance my whole supply. While we have very strong technical skills on our voluntary boards, it really should be advisory and policymaking, and it should be the staff that actually. Sets forth the technical information, without that, that's the core of the competency of anything that we do here, and especially the regulatory boards. All right, that's the end of my speech, moving on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Agenda item number four, how to get dark in here. Library state grant anticipation note, Heidi Doyle, treasurer.
Good evening, good evening. So we had our bid on Tuesday for renewing the library stack. The last portion of the state grant, the seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And the winning bid was awarded to Norwood Bank for an interest rate of zero point three nine percent. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the bid from Norwood Bank for the library building project state grant anticipation note. In the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. It will run from June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one till June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
I'm moved.
On favor, George? Jeff?
I would say thank you to Heidi for her work on this.
And a question, Heidi, if we get the grant before to just, we just retire it whenever the grant comes in?
No, it's a one-year note at this point, and we're not sure, I've talked to Elizabeth, and we're not sure when it, we knew it wasn't coming in this fiscal year. And I don't know, we don't know the timing, so.
But when it comes in, so you just keep the bond for one year?
For as far as I can tell, we keep it for one year.
It's pretty cheap money.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that, I noticed that.
I just want to say, I am I as well.
And then just for the signing of the note, if you want to vote to have Eric sign, or if you want to arrange that I meet you guys tomorrow, I could go to people's houses or whatever to sign the note. Whatever people are comfortable with.
So I talked to Heidi about this earlier today, I actually have a vacation day tomorrow, and it's on my calendar to visit her at nine thirty tomorrow.
Perfect, because I am not gonna be.
I can be there too, anyway, I'm actually gonna come up for a few minutes.
Okay, so at least there's two, is Paul, what would you like to do?
I wanna have Eric sign for.
I'm with Paul, because I'm gonna be out of town all day tomorrow.
All right, so be it. It's in my, it's in my calendar, so it's gold.
All right, nine thirty, and Jackie will be there too, thank you.
Absolutely, very good. All right, moving on, agenda item number five, consideration of signing rail trail easement and license as voted. Five fifteen twenty-one, annual town meeting, Gino, hi, Gino.
Hi, well, as you recall, the town meeting approved the acceptance of the easement for the rail trail connector. We now have the documents ready, we actually have two documents, a license and the easement, the license because that was done. So that, in the event that we didn't get the easement executed in time for construction to start. We have that one signed by the, the owner of the property, and so that's ready to be signed now. We don't have the easement signed by the owner just yet, but it should be any day now. So this is just to accept, you know, vote to authorize the board to sign to accept those two documents.
How long is the license good for?
One year.
One year, okay.
Yeah, so it's not, no pressure.
So pretty confident we can get the easement done within that year?
Oh, absolutely.
I'll move that we accept the, sign the license and easement.
Quick disclaimer, so would I sign it, would the board sign it, would David sign it, who signs the actual?
Well, the way it's, the way it's drafted is it has all the board members signing. So all four, four members to sign.
The license, is that okay, do we want to change that? I mean, if I'm showing up tomorrow anyway.
Can we have the chair to sign it? Because I, like I said, I'm not available at all tomorrow.
Right, right. I think it's a question, I don't know, I mean, it's just a, it's a.
I can stop by sometime over the weekend if you need everybody to sign up, but I just can't do it tomorrow.
Okay, maybe that would be.
I can be there, you know, if two helps, I could be there tomorrow, I'm coming up anyway around ten thirty, so I just come early.
I mean, it's not an emergency, it can be signed over a week, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If it needs our signature, fine, well, I'll show up and sign.
Yeah, I can get there sometime in the next week, I just can't do it tomorrow.
That's fine.
That's all, I'll just leave it, I guess, leave it with Diane, because she chases us down when we, when we forgot about it.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, go ahead, Eric, I was gonna add one point, but go ahead.
No, I had to come to some.
I just did, didn't you have a walkthrough on the rail trail this week too, Gino? Some kind of meeting, I thought, no?
Yes, Sean had a meeting with the site supervisor, just to review the details of the construction.
Okay, so that, I mean, it's progressing, in other words.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to, George made a motion to authorize the signature to, to approve it. Paul, do you have another point of information or a second?
Yes, no, I was a question that. Has council reviewed this?
Council drafted it, yes.
Our council?
Yes, oh, yes.
Wasn't there language in there about no motorized?
Yes.
Devices?
Yes.
Well, that. I started to read it, unfortunately, I'm a lawyer and I. Was concerned about federal law. That there are disabled people with. Motorized wheelchairs. And why we banning them from.
Yeah, and that's certainly not the intent.
Yeah, but that's the wording, so I felt because of the work I do with disability commissions that. This was too blatant. Discrimination, and felt that may have violated federal law, so I. Let me withdraw that comment, I just want to. Make sure the council reviewed this, is really what I'm trying to say now, I don't think council. Did look at it from what I started to read.
Okay, well, what we can do is the. Well, for one thing, only the license is signed by the owner of the land right now anyway, so construction can start. We can have council, we go over the, the permanent easement and change that language.
Okay.
The license only authorizes construction anyway, it doesn't prohibit any, any motorized vehicles, it's the easement that does that.
Okay.
Okay, we have like a long, we have a year to modify the easement, then that makes sense.
Yeah. It won't take that long.
I know, I know, but that's a good, Paul, there's a very good point, there must be some exceptional language there, there must be.
Probably say like gasoline-powered vehicles or, you know, gasoline engine-powered rather, because most of the. Handicap access would be a battery-powered wheelchair or something.
See what Holliston has for the rail trail.
That's a good idea.
I mean, why don't we look at what they have? And, and it doesn't, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we don't need to spend a lot of money on lawyers, just use what other people use, so we don't. Exclude people.
Hey, as a lawyer, I reset that, I think we should.
I think we should definitely spend less money on lawyers.
Hollison's not withstanding, I would rather not put a technology into this, I mean, Tesla will come out with a hundred mile an hour dirt bike.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Even Hollison says that, I would rather actually just kind of make careful language.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Just as simple as accepting any things necessary, whatever.
Any mechanical device necessary for access by the disabled, handicapped. Some language to that effect.
Exactly, I'm sure, something like that. All right, so it's good enough, we can still sign the license agreement over the next week, again, it'll be with Diane. All right, thank you very much, Gino.
Would we vote on it?
Oh, yeah, we have a motion.
I need to second it.
Okay. Yeah, the license agreement, on favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I'm also I. All right, we'll see you next week, and thanks again, Gina.
Thank you.
All right, so coming up next, I think this one's George's, right?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
There's no read it off, just consideration of rail trail ditch restoration, I'll request it George tomorrow.
Yes, thank you, I'm gonna actually have Rob Wolf, who's on here, speak on this. It's as landowner of a piece of the rail trail, we need to make a request to the state, so I'm gonna have Rob explain. What we're looking at for this, go ahead, Rob.
Okay, yes, this refers to. The whole section of the rail trail that Sherburne owns is fourteen hundred feet, but I'm mostly concerned at this point in time. With the first two hundred feet going from. the Holliston line, which is Dopping Brook up to where the the new access trail that we just discussed will be coming onto the trail at the gas pipeline. And the, the issue is, is that the the, the drainage ditches alongside there have been not maintained. And in fact, possibly even sort of some of the farm work there has put sediment in them, and there's water ponding right on the rail bed there. And there's a the Central Mass mosquito control board, their business is coming in and restoring drainage, which is supposed to exist. They, they have a fairly informative brochure on that. Which I had, George, I sent to you, I don't know if you distributed it to.
I didn't send it to the board, sorry.
Okay, I can, if you want me to share my screen, I can show that.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Yeah, hang on one second, Rob. I have to allow you to share the screen, I believe. No, that's my screen, you wanted to share my screen. Sorry about that.
Good thing you only had that up.
I know, I know, I know, I didn't have anything yet, but I gotta figure out where it is. Huh. David, you know where it is? It used to be right under share screen. Hang on, Rob, we'll find it. No, you should be, try it, try it. It says it's clicked now.
Okay.
Maybe when, when, when I had Neil.
There we go.
Yeah, it must have been, I had it turned off at Neil, I probably turned on for Neil.
Okay, so this is, this is a description of the work they do. They, they stress that they do not perform any work in natural pristine wetlands, and they do not do any new construction of ditches that will drain wetlands. They only maintain existing features. So the idea is, is that the property owners or town officials, which in either case now would be the selectmen, can request them to come in and do an assessment. And they'll, they look at all kinds of data and determine whether it's appropriate to do some changes to the ditching that will remove water ponding where you don't want it, where there's mosquitoes breeding in it. And that would be clearing up this little section there would really be very helpful for getting our connection to the new trail that we're getting built. And there's, they have their, anybody can look at their site, they've got plenty of information on the site, so they do this kind of restoration. They also do mosquito control. And they, they effectively try to do it in the sort of most organic way possible, so I think they're, if they have to use something to actually kill the mosquitoes, because you know, they, they're certainly not going to drain all the wetlands around, that's they, they tend to start with the bacterial treatment, the BT, which just kills mosquito larvae. And then they also do things with organic oil treatments and kind of as their last resort, they'll do low dose chemical spraying. So this is just to let you know, thi- this was suggested by Robert Widnick, we were out walking the rail trail to look at another trail project of a foot trail that comes up and intersects the rail trail. And he said that mass mosquito was actually quite helpful in building the Holliston rail trail. There were some areas that were around the, the big brick tunnel there. Where they cleaned up some, some ditching and prevented water that was ponding on the trail. And, and it's all, so it's a two-step process, they would come in and do this assessment first. If they feel it's appropriate to do anything, then they would send a description of what they're gonna do to the town. And it's kind of up, I assume at that point it's up to the town to accept that or to you know, negotiate with them on saying that there, there's something about that that doesn't meet our goals.
Thanks, Rob. I think, I think the easy thing to explain about this is that it doesn't hurt as the landowners for us to request the state to make this assessment, because then we can still make a decision based on their recommendation. But I think this is a great way to control mosquitoes without the spraying, without, you know, that's, that's not a proposal here. If we could clean out ditches and get the rail trail to be where it could be handicap accessible and all these things, right now it's just too wet there, so this could be a good first step, and especially if the state's gonna pay for it, why, why, why not have them come out and tell us what they could do?
Well, that was my question. So the mosquito control is a assessment on the member communities. And it's charged to the town via the state. It's on the cherry sheet. My question was is there a surcharge for a project like this? Or is it already included in our, the assessment that we are paying?
Says in this brochure, right next to the picture of the ditch, it says, property owners in the CMMCP service area do not pay any additional cost for individual services rendered.
Terrific, so it's part of our assessment.
Yep. That's what I'm reading here. I mean, I think we can ask that question when they, after they make their assessment, just to double check, but. So if the, I, I would make a motion that we send a letter to this, to this group to do an assessment.
Second.
Yeah. Like that. All right, I'm all in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I am also I. If you could eliminate the share, I just kind of see people.
Yeah, and Rob, if you want to get in touch with David Williams to have him do the letter. That would be that would be helpful, so then he can, he can send a letter from the town requesting this.
Okay.
All right, give me a second, by the way. Thanks, thank Rob for presenting this, I appreciate your work on this.
Okay, thank you.
Nice job.
I need, I need better lighting in my house, clearly, all right. I do have a burnt out light right above me, I'm trying to, every other one on. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on, agenda item number seven, consideration of annual appointment process, continuation from before. Is Vicky speaking on this?
She's still here, I assume so.
Yeah.
Oops, hang on, I muted you by mistake, I'm sorry. No, that was my bad.
Yes, I am. Sorry, let me get here. I didn't know I was up, okay, real true, okay, sorry, I missed that one. All right. Thank you for revisiting this again. So I sent you all an update of the procedural changes that we're proposing. So we're gonna do this in two parts. One is looking at the current annual procedure with proposed changes, and then the second one is how those changes reflect in the current select board operating procedures. So we're gonna do that, that one, we're gonna do the the first one would be the current annual procedure with proposed changes in red. Now, what I can do is
You want me, you're gonna share your screen?
Yeah, hold on for a minute, don't put it up yet.
No, I'm just gonna allow you to do it, that's all.
I just want to make sure. I thought I had it up here, I guess I don't. All right. So you have two things, actually, you have three things, actually. So I have the application for consideration. I have current annual procedure with proposed changes and the current select board operating procedure. Okay, so but I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start with the I'm gonna start with the current annual procedure, so we can get through that fairly quickly. If I could find it. Sorry. Okay. All right. Can you see that all?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So right now, this is, we talked to Diane, I don't know how much went over the last, we talked to Diane, we went through, Nancy Hess is on with me as well. And I don't think Neil is on, but, so we went through this with Diane and David to, to, to give you an overview of what is currently what currently happens when somebody applies for the procedure that happens when they put in an application for a, a committee or a board seat. On January, the assignments are gathered. In February, the identification of openings is made. They send an email out, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, read it all, but basically, the email sent out, a chair is, is received, receives the information, and then they, they are told to tell members that are up for reinstatement that if they're going to consider their appointment, or if they're going to not consider it, and that they're also told that it does not guarantee that they will be, that there will be a reappointment. What we're asking and that we read is, can, we would like to request an overview of committee responsibilities and time requirements from the committee chair to allow interested applicants to have an overview of what is required, because right now, nobody really knows, and it's not documented everywhere. So the process would be in February, the board committee members contacted by the paper email that their term is about to expire and asked if they're considering asking the select board to appoint them. The board of committee members informed by the paper email of the closing date to reapply. The board of committee members applying to seek another term should be directed to send the completed application to the select board office. In March and April, the vacancies are posted, website, newspaper, webpage, bulletin board. When there's a joint appointment, the board or the committee of the trustee that requires a joint appointment notification, so in red is what we're asking to be put in, because right now that's not in the language. So when there is a board trustee that requires a joint appointment, notification will be posted. Once thirty days has passed, then the joint group will move forward with interviews and the appointment. So basically, what we're asking is for it to be pretty explicit when we put something like this in, so that people will know what actually is going to happen.
Can I ask a question, Vicky?
Yeah.
Do you mind? I would suggest maybe adding the word social media, like next door or something like that, would you want, would that make sense to have that in there?
Because you, you just took the words out of my mouth, Jeff, I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the bullet points above and also in the joint appointment.
Because there, isn't there a Facebook, I'm not a Facebook person either, there's a Facebook town page, isn't there, George, or something?
There is, but yeah, so there's next door, or I would just put social media.
Yeah.
Decided which, which social media platform can be used.
Exactly.
Okay. So what we're proposing is that the language be that the interviews, cable TV output, social media, once thirty days has passed, then the joint group will move forward with interviews and the appointment. In May, applications are to be received by May thirtieth in the select board office. The town administrator and the personnel board shall review the applications to ensure no conflicts with other board appointments, correct applications, applications filled out with required documentation, resume, whatever else is necessary. Once the applications have been reviewed, for completeness, the select board will get the applications and candidates will be informed of the time and dates of interviews by the appointing authority, the select board. This is different because the personnel board is involved now. But it also kind of helps the town administrator in that, you know, we can make sure that this is done, we will also make sure that Jackie at the town clerk's office has any information, she has people that haven't been sworn in or need to be sworn in, or at this point in time that they've on the boards, or we'll just, we'll just work with her to make sure that when these applications come in, that she knows that these people are up for either reappointment or whatever, and that they have to be identified.
Would we need anything in that, in that sequence, Vicky, anything in, in an instance where we don't get applicants? In other words, if we you said the application have to receive by May thirtieth, if you scroll up a little bit to, to April, is there a step where we now know who's not running and we don't, there may be positions which we don't get enough applicants for, you know what I mean? There's a, there's a gap analysis almost of here's the people that aren't, don't want to be reappointed, and here's the people that applied, but we probably need to somewhere in that April, May timeframe be looking at particularly notable areas where there aren't applicants, enough applicants. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the gap analysis is a good way to describe it. I'll put that in there then.
Thank you.
Probably March, April, or right under here, because then when everything comes in, we'll know as things come in. You should have a gap analysis probably right here.
Yeah, or may, that may thirtieth, the applications are due, then we would also then know as soon as, you know, first of June or something where we didn't get enough.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. And so in June, after the appointments are made, the member and town clerk are notified, so the clerk can swear in the member. The committee chair is also notified, as the new member may not vote or participate in any meetings unless that person is sworn in and has completed the ethics course for the state of Massachusetts. So that's a pretty important part here, because I think people forget to do that. And so.
Not a state, by the way.
Sorry?
It's a Commonwealth, not a state. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay, I will change that.
Three commonwealths.
Okay, it is a great commonwealth. So at that point, you know, I think people have to know that they can't either, they can't participate if they're not sworn in, that's a pretty important point there.
Well, I actually wonder, can I question that, though? I mean, you know, the public can participate, you don't have to be a committee member to, you surely can't vote, but I mean, if you view the public as speaking at a meeting, that's sort of presenting or participating, don't you think?
I don't think they can participate as a member of the committee.
Right, I think you're saying participate as, maybe as, as a member. That's, that gets Jeff's point.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a good point, Jeff, and as anybody can participate in a meeting.
No, that's a good point, yeah.
Because particularly when I was in advisory, I would sometimes, different committees participate only because I was sort of representative advisory, but advising that committee on, on budget issues.
Yeah, that doesn't, that's kind of, yeah, we're just covering people that are are asked to, who, who were finally given the appointment, they can't do anything until, okay, I'll include that.
This is a, this is a nitpick, I admit.
Yeah, I will change that. And so I just put this in, Jeff, because I think these were important. And I don't know where they fit in, but it's something you, as a board, may want to address in terms of, I know you have enough on your plate already, but you know.
I think you've got it, you've handled it perfectly, I think, because the other, the first three you already have, we just added social media. But, but my gap analysis is really the fourth bullet, in other words, let's say we come to the first week of June and there's some gaps. It seems like, we'll see if it's overwhelming, but if we have, you know, three or four boards that we each handle and we could then reach out to try and fill the gap.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I'm kind of a I'm a media person, and in general, I think the video does well, I mean, I mean, ultimately, I would, it would be nice to have the chair people that are on these different committees kind of give a little overview on a video and maybe, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
The conservation committee can kind of take pictures of what they do, I mean, that would be the greatest thing, because then people that have no clue can really get a feel for what it is, but that's a little bit of work, which I don't mind doing, I can kind of start that with a few people, but ultimately, I think that will open up more doors for us.
No, I'm just talking about arm twisting, I'm just talking about arm twisting.
Yeah, no, we can arm twist too.
And then you could hand them off to the committee chair to go over the position responsibilities.
So I think this, this, I will redo this without the red, so that you can see you know, what the final document looks like, but this would be it, so basically, what this does, though, is it changes your select board operating procedure. So currently, this is what is here, and then I've, we've added in on the red what we've suggested in this document. Everybody follow?
Yep.
Okay. So basically, how it, and we can't change. Um, so basically, how it, and we can't change this, you have to change this, so you need to either vote on the change or whatever, but you don't have to do it tonight, but this is, if we accept this, sorry, I don't mean to make you dizzy, if this is accepted, this has to be changed.
I see.
So, basically, town administrator will notify the chairman, appropriate board or committee, that by X date, they must submit in writing any specific skills, talents, or training, they would appreciate the select board considering in their vetting process for the candidate. This is not what's done currently, um, the boards that are requiring appointments are giving the candidates, which should not be done, because that's a conflict. Basically, it should be left up to the select board to be able to make the decisions, and they can request information from the committee board chairs, if necessary, regarding the candidates during the interview process. So, that's something that's a, a good, a big, not a big change, but it's a change that needs to be considered. I've asked around other towns, and basically, most towns, this is the process, they don't let the candidates, they don't let the boards present candidates, because it is a conflict, and it could present some very big problems with conflict of interest, so this is the way they keep it separated. Notify incumbents and request their statements of availability regarding reappointment. Such notifications shall include a statement that no person is entitled to be reappointed because of incumbency. The board of, or committee members applying to seek another term should be directed to send their application to the select board. So, what we're trying to include in here is, because this is your original doc, this is your original statement, what we're, what we're asking to be included, because it reflects in the other part that we just went over, is that, um, everybody, including people that would like to be reappointed, should put in a new application, and, and add that, so it can be put into as a part of just transparency, and that everybody goes through the same process, so there's no discrimination. Select, I have, we have to change that to select board. May meet with potential new appointees as an open meeting before making a final decision on the appointment. Appointments will normally be made only when all members of the board are present, appointments will be made by majority of the select board. I didn't, so I apologize, I haven't changed this part yet, I talked about it, changing it today, but I didn't do it. Number four would be interim vacancy appointments, which is not addressed in your operating procedure right now. So, when a member of the board or committee vacates the position at any, at a time in the year that does not reasonably fit into a normal June fifteenth appointment process, the filling of that position will follow the requirements for posting applications and interviews as if part of the normal process, with adjustments to dates and deadlines deemed appropriate or the circumstance by consensus of the select board.
I have a question on that, so is there really an interim appointment? Because really, maybe we're off cycle, but we're still appointing a permanent, so when we appoint someone, it's not like, okay, this is only interim, you go away after six months, and someone else takes over, do you know what I mean?
There is, there is an interim, you do appoint interim people.
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, do you appoint somebody just until next appointment cycle, or do you appoint somebody to fulfill that term? If it's a three-year term, do you appoint somebody to, to finish that term, or to just until the next June?
Yeah, I see, I think of interim as being someone who's meant to be temporary for a full time, and I don't, I don't know if we have, I've never done an interim, have we?
The only interim we've done is for elected officials, like interim trust library trustee, or for some board that's, we did it with the Board of Health, remember? When Matt Beavers joined the Board of Health, because they have to run at the very next election.
Yeah, but you're still there until the next, maybe, maybe I'm playing a semantics game here.
You are, but you're.
Like, like interim fire chief, interim police chief, that's a good one, interim police chief, where you're here until blank, you know, I don't know, it doesn't.
So, right now.
I'll, I can tell you for an example of conservation, that you, that you fill in a term, like if there's a three-year term, somebody's serving, at least you can change it, but this is the way it's been on that committee, that, that if somebody leaves, somebody fills in that seat until that term was over, that three-year term, if they left after one year, they'd fill in two years, if they left after two years, they'd fill in one year, is the way, uh, it has acted for the Conservation Commission.
But the point is, Michael, that we need to have a policy from the select board for all committees, and I think Nancy has her hand up, Eric, but I think maybe as a personnel, we should hear from her.
Okay, but I, I do want to add, what Michael says, I think goes to all committees, but it's still not interim, you are the person filling that role, there's no parentheses interim there, do you know what I mean? All right, Nancy, go.
And I, I think you could change the wording, be, to, instead of.
Term.
Call it, like, if, if there's a vacancy, an appointment to fill that, that position, or something like that, not.
I'll call it midterm, well, whatever, Nancy, I'm sorry, I would like to recognize you, of course.
I was just gonna say, the title is interim vacancy appointments, it doesn't necessarily mean an interim appointment, that's something that you can make a decision on, but I think the title of this is, is that a vacancy occurs.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You can call it appointment for interim vacancies.
Yeah.
This, I can be honest, personally, I, my personal opinion, people can discuss otherwise, I'd actually rather see the term midterm, or.
Just call it, just call it vacancy appointments.
Or off-cycle.
You don't even need, you don't even need to have another word, because if there's a vacancy.
You know what I could do, is I could put it in parentheses underneath.
I would just take interim, I think.
Interim has a very kind of defined thing, we commonly use, or, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I have another funny question, while we said it, because everyone said that, you know, we appoint all boards and committees. You guys, Vicky and George can help me here, um, the advisory is appointed by the town moderator, I think, not by the select board.
This is just for the select board policy, I think.
This is just your operating procedure, Jeff.
No, I know, I know it is, but I just, will we ever have to show which committees are appointed by the select board, and which ones are appointed by someone else, I don't know.
I could.
This is just for our appointments, Jeff.
No, I, I get that completely, but if someone's wondering.
Oh, right.
In other words, advisory doesn't go through this process, they go to the moderator.
Well, we can add in, because there isn't a list anywhere, you can add in to this document, your operating procedure, the boards that you, that the select board is, is, is responsible for, do you want?
I don't know, it has to be in here, but we should have it somewhere, I'm sure people know it, but it's, if it's.
Well, there is a board, but there is, but then you gotta find it, so why don't we just put it in here?
Yeah.
It's all in one spot.
There's a reason not to have it, that is, that we, we have the power under the general laws to create committees.
Okay.
And to sunset them.
And to sunset them. So, you don't want to codify a committee that makes it permanent, and you don't want to exclude a committee that we create tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a good point. It should be documented somewhere.
It is, I think, I got a list from Diane.
Diane has a list of it.
Okay.
It's, it's all kept.
No, these changes are fantastic.
Okay.
You've done a great job.
Oh, thank you, well, Nancy helped a lot as well, so the joint appointments pretty much stays the same. So, if you guys, if you would like, what I could do is, um, just put these two documents together, the other one, the application is basically the same, except for, uh, we're going to ask for a resume, which I know came up the last meeting, but somebody on the board did ask for, to put that in, last time we spoke about it, it wasn't last meeting, it was before that. But it really, you know, if you don't know people's background, biography sometimes doesn't cover everything, and especially if you want to get a clear picture of what their, um, qualifications might be, or, you know, how, how they're representing themselves, and the resume kind of gives you validation for that, so if there is a resume that somebody can put in there, people usually have it, so it's not that hard of a thing to put in, so we just put and/or resume, because if you don't have it, you don't have it.
That's a good idea.
So, at least it can be there, or you can look, you know, LinkedIn, so this is the same as it was before, if there's anything that you think we should add, uh, to it, or if it's not complete enough, or people, you know, you want to have a little bit more information, just let us know, and we can, we can put that in there too, but this is the way it stands now.
I think, Vicky, by adding that line, that helps, because right now, a lot of people fill this form out with the very little information, and just because they assume we're gonna reappoint them, and it's like, I would actually rather see the fat, see a list of, you know, like you said, asking to put a biography or resume is, is important.
Yeah, in the corporate world, they're also asking now for a link to your LinkedIn page, so they sometimes will accept that.
People want to share it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, though, the level of detail does depend on, I think, uh, like, when you're applying for ZBAs, different than the Arts Council.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But that could be a bio, then, a short bio.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, applies to the position. And frankly, if this competition, I think, you know, thoroughness makes one more competitive than another to some degree, and what comes out is.
And I don't think we're asking too much more, I think there was some comment about, we don't want to make it too cumbersome, and I think by just adding a line that you can attach a resume, that's not additional.
But it's not coming, and if they have a LinkedIn profile, that's fine too, or if they want, if they want, and I, what I can add is LinkedIn profile, or any other links that might be helpful to describe your, you know, background, so whatever.
I think, I think you've got it.
Okay.
There, just add LinkedIn as an option.
Okay.
The last thing, say, the last thing I want to add, though, is something, maybe we should make a note here, um, so I believe you can, uh, redact, um, names and addresses, if there's ever public records requests, but someone should know that the bulk of the resume will be public record, so she at least put some kind of disclaimer down there, LinkedIn is going to be public record, because it's, uh, you know, nothing on the internet is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care what your security settings are, but, um, someone might be sensitive about a resume, who knows?
Right. I think Nancy, Nancy still has her hand up, and I know Michael has his hand up too, so just so you can.
Okay, hold on one second, let me turn on.
Share your screen, so then Eric can see.
Yeah, there it is, you're right, Michael less or Nancy, I'll take them, or I see them, which puts, uh, oh, Nancy put her hand down, so Michael, you just bumped to the top of the line, go ahead.
Oh, wow, what a prize. First, I'll say, I, I mean, I've looked at this stuff, and I was at the personnel board meeting before that, I think all this stuff is, is good idea, I like the regular, the systematizing of it all. And I will thank, I'll thank the, uh, Vicky and Nancy for putting the effort into it. The, uh, just a few little questions that, I have a few points, and we could answer them all in the way. Is there, what is, it's always been a little fuzzy about the timing of this open meeting, I mean, of doing the conflict of interest training, which is really, I think I can't tell what the exact name is versus ethics, whether people have to do it before they apply, in the past, it's been this mushiness of doing it, sometimes after you get in there, I just think you should just be clear about when you do need to do that, and attend any kind of open meeting law seminar, because historically, I don't think very many people have actually done the seminar, as opposed to being, you're handed the booklet, um, and you're expected to read it. So, you just need to come up with some clarity about what we, is reasonable to expect, um, especially for people who are just, where they have to do it before they even can get voted on, which was, I think, something new.
So, is, uh, so you have to take the ethics course online before you can get voted in, or is it after?
Well, it hasn't been, it's been after in the past with some fuzziness, but it's never been clear, and nobody's checked on it, and, uh, so I don't know whether you want to add any specificity that you're expected to take it within six months or something like that, or.
Jackie, is Jackie still on here? I think Jackie kind of manages.
Yeah, absolutely, doesn't, she won't swear you in usually until you've taken it.
Oh, no, I've, I've been sworn in many times without any issue about that.
Mike, Michael, let Jackie talk for a second, please.
We, we, we've always, um, ever since I've worked in the office anyway, we've given everyone the open meeting law, information and the ethics training, when they come in to get sworn in. And they have to sign an acknowledgement, which we keep, that we have given them the information that's required by the state. So, you know, we don't babysit people, we expect them to do, to do the ethics training, when we get the certificates, we do have a spreadsheet, and I can tell you when the last time everybody, um, you know, did the ethics training, when I sent out the email, like in April, I did get a lot of emails from people saying, I don't remember when I did it, and then I, you know, looked them up and told them, you know, when the last time that they took the training, but everybody that is an incumbent or whatever is supposed to be doing it every two years, all of us, whether you're on a board, a committee, or an employee of the town. So, and not everybody does, but it's impossible, we, we don't babysit people, but if somebody questions it, then that's when it's going to be an issue.
I, I will say that I have to take the ethics training twice, I have to take one actually for, um, such a policy committee on the select board, and I have to take one for staff, each, uh, every two years, I take it. At least it's my opinion, I think it's fine, so we don't babysit people, and, um, we make sure that it is available to them. I'm actually, I tend to be very conservative with this, and I don't think anyone should actually make any vote on a board until they take it. It's not that hard, it's online, and if you don't have the time to do that, then you shouldn't have the time to sit through a board meeting and make a decision. That's my opinion.
So, Jeff, I mean, Eric, is that, if that's the case, um, should we put in a time that within, within thirty days after being sworn in?
At least to put into the, I, I was, I want to say before they take a vote on a board, I really do, I would say before they actually take action on a board, that they should actually, because, you know, you could actually question the very first action that they take, you know, it's, it's, um, again, I tend to be more strict with this, and I have to live this every single day.
I would, I would advise you as a lawyer not to have that requirement, because we'll get sued, the town will get sued, let's say there's a forty B development on the Board of Appeals, take some action with regard to that, and it turns out that somebody didn't take the ethics exam. All of a sudden, we've have, if we have that language in a procedure, you handed somebody an issue to undo the work of the committee. Let's not shoot the town or the committee in the foot over this ethics exam, the way that it's done now is, you should be, as part of your swearing-in process, take the exam. That's the timeframe. You want to get sworn in fairly soon, it's a pretty simple thing to do, the ethics exam, it's done online, it's not complicated. I wouldn't do anything more than that.
But isn't it, isn't it required, though, by the state?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna say, can we actually simply state, um, consistent with state requirements, that they have to take it consistent with state requirements, so at least we're covered, and that we're requiring it, and that if someone doesn't do it, it's, it's on them, but we're not requiring anything more stringent than the state requires, so I can't imagine if that went to court, it would actually be different, because the state requires it anyway, does that make any sense?
Yes. Yes, that makes sense.
Moving on, does that, what do you care about the open meeting law, that other question there, um, whether this is anything, you, you just, I just want to, just try to help clean up the wording, that you just say something parallel to that for the open meeting law.
So, it's completed the ethics course and open meeting law seminar.
Well, there isn't a state requirement, like there is for the ethics exam.
Right, it's different, right.
Yeah, there's no test, and there's no test for the open meeting law.
Right, and there's no computer program where you sit down for an hour, go through a process, so it's.
I have two, three more little things, and then I'll be done. Just trying to be practical, um, I don't know whether there's a place in here to add something about encouraging people to, uh, attend committee meetings of the committee that they're interested in, that there, I think that's, because you talk about learning from the chair what it's like, so you can tell people what it's like, I think there's nothing like going to a couple of meetings, one, two, or three, which is what I did before I even joined some committees, um, so I think there should be some, some incentive to do that, so that, uh, so that people understand what they're getting involved in, and it, and it suits to be the committee that they're joining, so that people that they're going to get a member who understands what they're signing up for, in a more realistic way than just hearing you got to meet every two Thursdays for three hours, or whatever, so if there's a way to put something in there, I would suggest that, um, the next point is, uh, yeah, the gap thing is a big deal, I, to the extent that you highlight that kind of gap analysis, and getting it done, so people know, and even sharing that with, uh, I mean, I guess, it gets into my last point, I, I I have a little trouble with the word conflict as it's used here, that there seems to be this, I mean, I've served on a lot of committees. The, the sense that somehow there's this self-serving, built-in, not getting enough other people, that it's a conflict of interest to share with the committee, is, I think, a little overdone in this thing, and it, and it sends off, I think, a little bit of a, a negative feel about that, um, and so, I don't think there's any reason to, to sort of put up these barriers about. to sort of put up these barriers about that. It's a conflict to even share with a committee who's applied. Um, and the idea that, right, I, I don't want to get into things like, that people are getting dissuaded from going to a meeting or joining a group that somehow a group didn't, didn't deal with them, which is what I almost feel is like a, a, a story that goes, I hear, say, she said, story that goes on, uh, with the Conservation Commission, which I was there for that, um, and which whatever, I don't, didn't see that. So to some extent, I could see dropping the wording anywhere in there about where somehow it's some sort of conflict. I know Vicky, I brought this up before and Vicky has said that she sees it in other towns, that they don't do it. Uh, I just can't, I mean, when I looked at another place, wasn't that it was explicit that you couldn't get it. It's just that it wasn't a regular thing, but that I feel like, I feel like not sharing is, is less collegial. It makes it seem more controversial than it really is. It's never that way. We have trouble filling positions. It's not a matter of that we're dealing with, oh, competition and, oh, and the politics of it. And you say there's no politics involved. By definition, you're trying to get things or you're claiming it's politics. But I don't know, I just think it's a tone that I think you can moderate and, uh, and still share with the committees. I don't think it's gonna, anybody's gonna really manage to dissuade anybody.
Can I just, that, that wording is not in the document. It's just a description. So basically, the current select board operating procedure under number two for appointments, it's basically says the town administrator will notify chairman of appropriate board committee that they may submit in writing any specific skills, talents or training they would appreciate the select work considering in their vetted of process of candidates. The, the note, if you notice parentheses, is this is not what's done currently. The boards that are requiring appointments are giving the candidates, which should not be done as there is a conflict. So that's just a, that's just a notation. It's not going to be.
It's still, it's still, uh, a feeling, uh, it's still.
But it's not going to be in the wording. If the wording, which you, which isn't done now is
Okay.
Basically, the, the committee chairs can tell.
Well, would you regularly share what, what has things come in? Do you share? Would you regularly share it with the committee or you're feeling it's the, it's a tone that there's something wrong with sharing.
Because they won't, they won't be getting anything from, they won't be getting on, they won't, all of these red, these, uh, applications will not be coming in willy nilly. What we're trying to avoid is things coming like, they're only going to get them in June. They're going to look at them, overview them and then vote on it. Cause that's really what this says that they have to do.
Going along the way for people, for committees that have openings, real openings, not just reappointments, just knowing what's going on in this process is just sharing what's happening. And so the gap analysis isn't left to a June thing as opposed to, oh geez.
But it has to be left to a June thing because everything's not required to be in until the end of May.
I know, but I'm saying along the way, in the past, things have been shared. And I'm not just talking about conservation. I'm talking about other committees.
No, I understand, but what.
And it's been shared along the way so that people know that slots are getting filled and that.
But we're not filling them along the way.
No, no, I'm saying that people are at least interested. I, I misspoke. I'm just talking about the fact that people are even interested and know.
I mean, there can be, you know, question of, you know, has anybody applied for these and there can be some, but the, the select board, we're trying to ease off um, their calendar to be able to have to deal with this all the time and just deal with it like once so that the processes goes through people, you know, the groups that really can help make sure everything's done correctly. And so when they get it, it's a one time, let's look it over. So at that point, you know.
But if I have openings on the energy committee and I say to people, apply to the select board, can I, here alone, I have openings that are just, they're total vacancies. Uh, now, if I want to know along the way, if somebody happens to apply in April or, I mean, would you even say, oh, go talk to the committee? Or go do that. It's, it feels like there's this.
Which is a good request, you know, there, uh, uh, applicants are not required, but are advised that they should attend a meeting or contact current or former committee members. I mean, that would, should be sufficient.
So, but if I want to know if anybody's applied for the energy committee, would you tell me?
I think, and I think what we're going down to detail here, I think, Michael, you, you are about some transparency. You want to make sure that it's all available, public information, who the applicants are and that's easy to find. I guess, um, the only issue I have is there, is there any questions about any kind of, if someone wants to pull out? I guess, I guess, well, someone knows it. In fact, I'm, I was the one that added the whole thing about public information on the application. That as soon as someone applies that their information and that they're being applicant is probably instantly public information. And I think it's more of an administrative thing, be it on the, on the webpage or whatever it is. Uh, you know, or someone can request it of who the current applicant pool is. I think that's.
I don't see any reason that you can't request it. It's just, like I said, what we're trying to do is minimize the amount of time the select board spends on this. Cause they shouldn't be getting, and I don't think Diane, you know, lets things go through all the time. We try to make it so that it's one time that they look at everything, they have a clear perspective of who's applying, they have all the documentation they need. And so they can make decisions in that during that time period in June, so that they're not getting paperwork, you know, for three months and they're trying to figure out who's what, where. They don't need, they got other things they can do. You know, that, that, that they can put, if we can make this an easy process for them, whoever's on the board to be able to just look at it, know it's been vetted, know that eyes are dotted, t's are crossed, then that's what we're trying to do. So it's not to be a lack of transparency. We're just trying to be more, actually more transparent, less discriminative in terms of, you know, how the information's being, everybody's going to fill out the same stuff. Right now, that's not the way it works. So we're trying to be very clear about the process, very clear about the application and very clear for the select board, what they need to do at a certain time. You want to ask, you know, when, who's applying at any point in time? That's fine, but you may not get an answer because there may not be any until the last minute.
That's fine. I don't mind that. I mean, it used to be easier that people would be sent in both places and, and people just knew what was happening, but that's.
Works out and, you know.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Always, nothing should be static. It's going to work for everybody. And if you put something in place, it's always worthwhile to review it, see what works and what doesn't, and then change it as time goes on. That, there's nothing here now that's undocumented in writing that we can work with and say, okay, that didn't work. Let's change it now and work. So next year, if one piece doesn't work, we can point to it, say, number two didn't work. We really need to change that because it was not good.
Great.
By hearing, by hearing to the public information, by hearing to, as, as public records law and hearing public information, this is, is transparent. People can request them as they come in. I don't think that's unreasonable and we have that. So I, I, I agree with some transparency, but we want to at least make that, make that available. I want to, um, just clarify, uh, Michael's first concern and the final document, the term conflict doesn't exist. Is that true?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
It was just, that was just a note.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
That's okay. So I'll redo this so that it's, you can look at a final document. So it's not all red and it, and you mix, if you want to make more changes, that's fine. I mean, it doesn't, like I said, this, but you, we can't change this one, which is your point of operating procedures. I think we can change the procedures, you know, and, and put those, but I'll make the changes in the operating and you guys, you, the select board has to vote on that. Actually have to vote on both, but I think both, they have to really vote on the procedures to change that. That's it. I don't want to take up any more time with that. Is everybody okay with that?
What comes amongst the board? Any questions amongst the board right now? So make sure.
No, I was just going to say, I think the way that Vicky did this is great. I think it really brings it back to the select board and not, I think that the whole point of what Michael just said is what we're trying to, we, we are trying to avoid any accusation that a board is self-appointed. And by giving them the applications at the same time to vet candidates and tell people maybe there's accusations. I'm not saying it's true that, that dissuading people from doing it, that that's not an opportunity at that point because they're coming right to the select board.
Always been true. Yeah.
Okay.
Now, um, Jeff, did you have a question or you just, you're touching.
No, I just, just go say, it's, it's beyond great. I think this is a huge improvement, Vicky. So really, thank you. Kudos.
You're welcome. Nancy helped also.
Yeah, the whole personnel board.
All right. Um, now. Where is that hand up? Using physical hands again, aren't we? All right, Jane, thank you. And Michael put his hand down. Very good.
Um, hi, thanks, Jean Bedren Bogus Delbrook Road Conservation Commission. Um, so we have, uh, three members who were, are up for reappointment. They have all expressed an interest in being reappointed. I believe they've all submitted their applications, but I'm just asking for clarification or so you're waiting, you, you're going to attempt to put this process in place as soon as possible? And we, we will wait until then and they will reapply when you finalized how to do it now?
Well, I think you can't kind of go back in between though. It's, it's hard to do it now because it's June fifteenth is right around the corner. So you know, that said, we, what we can do is look at who's applied and if we have to ask for more material, then they put in the application now, then maybe we can do that. But I don't know, it's up to the select board. I don't think it's fair because we haven't, we can't, you can't really go mid, mid-process and change things. It's really not fair.
One, one thing we can do this year, Vicky, if we haven't adopted this yet, before we appoint anybody, I would hope that we would actually really advertise these positions and that select board could get not just reappointment applications and that we could put it out on Nextdoor, put it out on social media where we can actually see if there's other, because I've had, I've had, at, at a lacrosse game on Sunday, a gentleman came, he had actually been to his first town meeting on Sunday. He's like, he actually came up to me because I saw you, he's a friend, he's somebody I've known for years. He's like, oh, I saw you up at the stage. How can I get involved? Because I've been, I haven't been involved, but I was really impressed with town meeting. I'd like to get involved. So I think there are more people out there that want to get involved. So we need to advertise what openings are there before we appoint anybody.
Okay, so Diane, I'll work on that with you.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm hearing two different answers. Vicky feels like it's, uh, we shouldn't make people wait because
the process.
Already in the process and George, you're saying you want to take more time.
I'm saying I want to advertise it. Yeah.
So, okay, just let us know when you feel like, uh, the process is in place. And, and until that time, those people that were interested in being reappointed will remain as members.
I think we should, maybe we should set a time tonight, Jean. We should set a time that says, let's advertise it until uh, June thirtieth. So then we have, or you know, how long do we usually advertise positions? Let's put them all up there right away. Have that time to get all applications in between now and two weeks from now or three weeks from now, whatever it is. And then we're not having another meeting for three weeks anyway. Then, once we have all the applications in, we can review, not just for conservation, for every committee, we can review all the applications and then make our appointments come, you know, July. We're not having another meeting till July is.
Okay, I mean, that's up to you, but I'm cool with that. I can.
How does that sound?
And put something together. I could maybe even do a little media thing too, you know, maybe take pictures of different things, but at the very least, we could put up the vacancies because there's.
Yeah, yeah. I think that makes sense.
So just to clarify, so the thirty days would be two meetings from now, right?
I, I don't know how many days, how many days we typically advertise, thirty?
Yeah.
Thirty is considered best practice, but it's, I don't think it's mandatory.
We stuck to it pretty good. I can only think of one exception.
Yeah, the town has had it posted for, as a vacancy on the, it's been on the town website for, for months.
Right. The, the point is.
Been in the broader social media.
Right, that, that was our, that was one of our points of this is to get the word up more, so.
No, I think, I mean, we could still function because obviously I think we're.
Right.
We just don't want to lose a quorum, but we're members until somebody is.
Exactly. So nobody's leaving the board as of June thirtieth, whether somebody's, like, they're going to continue their term until we have any, any changes.
Right. And we'll assume we'll hear if the applications are not complete, that, that Diane will get back to somebody about who's, who's applied. But, uh, 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 if you're changing it, so.
All right.
Diane, I'll be in touch with Diane. Do you want to say something?
No, actually, no, hold on one second. Sorry. Okay. You do have your hand raised, but Peggy Novak's ahead of you. So, uh, Diane Moores and then Peggy Novak, please.
I just wanted to say that after the last meeting, I put a press release in of all the boards and committees that are under the select board.
In the papers.
In the paper. And I'll put another one in tomorrow.
What about social media? That's the important one.
I'll help you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Peggy, I don't see you on here, but I see.
Yeah, you know, you're just going to see my name. I'm sitting in my kitchen. Um, I, I just wanted some clarification, um, following up on Jean's questions. Um, I'm on historical commission and historic district commission. On historical commission, we have a, well, on each commission, we have members whose terms are expiring this month. Why understand you to say that they will remain on the commission um, for the duration until you have settled this procedure? Um, and at least one of them inquired of, I think of Diane as to what they should do in terms of submitting their application. And she suggested waiting until you'd had this discussion. Should they now submit an application? I'm just a little confused on, on what should happen over the next thirty days or whatever.
And I want to add to that confusion a little bit because I know, um, George, well, maybe.
Oh, good.
Executing that now, we don't have a final policy. We have something with like we saw, do we want to actually, or is that just too, is that too administrative? You know, to, to take Vicky's draft, make it final. That won't happen until three weeks from now and now we're even further behind, but ultimately.
We make that final for next year and in the meantime, we advertise the positions and people apply like we have as our current policy. So then we can get this done this year. I think, I think that's what we're saying.
No, I concur with that. I think that makes sense.
So do I understand then that the people on the commissions who are interested in staying on the commission should now, at their earliest convenience, submit their applications to Diane?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as we should advertise that people who are interested in joining the commission should also apply.
We would be thrilled if we had some more people interested in joining. Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask you again, um, so for this year, for this go around, um, if you're not going to finalize the policy for X number of weeks, uh, should the people who are applying now for reappointment expect to be interviewed by the selectman before it's finalized?
The process, the way it stands now, that's how it usually is done anyway.
Well, that was actually never requested of us, but so I'm asking. Yeah.
Well, the operating procedure says that's what.
We're, we're supposed to, but usually I think all we've ever gotten was one recommendation each year for each position for the most part. As long as I've been on the board.
Right.
That's, there's no point in interviewing if we're just making a rubber stamp. So I think the point of this is that if we have multiple candidates, we'd interview and then make a decision. And we've done that with, like, I'll make an example of back a few months ago when they had multiple candidates to appoint the vacancy on the school committee. They interviewed, the school committee interviewed the candidates, which I attended, and then a decision was made as to which candidate they chose. So I think the interviews are more for when there's a contested seat.
Okay, so, uh, the three members who want to be reappointed, they should just to be on top of things, they should resubmit their applications with a resume because that's what you're going to be asking for.
Yes.
And then maybe wait after the social media piece has expired. And then you'll let us know if you, if you have other applicants and you want to interview people.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I think, actually, I think everybody should come to the, I mean, now that we have this virtual thing, if you want to be appointed, I would hope you would actually come to the meeting and have a discussion with us and tell us why you want to be on the board and not just assume you're going to be appointed.
Right, it's, yes, I agree. It's just never been really explicitly asked.
Hmm. And that's why we're changing it because we don't think it's been done right. So that's why, I think this is the right way to do it and, and it, and it, and it will get us hopefully where we want to be.
And just to follow up, I'm sorry, one more thing. Um, if, if people come to you who want to be on conservation and we haven't heard about them, you'll please let us know about them, right?
Not necessarily.
Well, at least so that we know that there's going to be a discussion at a selectman's meeting.
I, I think we should, George, maybe we should share the information because, you know, they may be trying to drum up candidates also. We both, we're both working to do that. So I think we should be upfront.
We can say there's multiple candidates and they.
It goes back to transparency. If asked, that's public information. As soon as someone submits their thing, it's immediately public information. And I think what you're asking for, uh, Jean, is like a proactive just dissemination of it.
Right. I, you know, the more we know, the better we can operate.
I don't think that it's written in here that's going to be a proactive handout. Handout to committees that people are applying for positions. It's if the committees want to know, they can ask.
Right.
Towards the end of the period when everything is supposed to be in, and they, that's kind of what we said before when Michael was talking.
I, as we transition this year, and we'll say, I actually think we should be proactive. I know there's concerns with all the self appointing, but I also want to be. Absolutes transparent as possible, and I think it's reasonable that the select board gets applications that at least notify. The chair of the whatever committee that is, I don't.
You'll get them, Eric, you'll get them all at once in June.
Okay.
Like, we're not going to be informed every time we get an application as a select board, so they shouldn't be informed every time they get an application.
We're gonna get.
At the end of the day, when it's closed, we'll say, here are the applicants.
Yes.
And like you said, Eric, that's, it's fair. We could also send that to whatever board. We'll say, look, we have five applicants for the conservation commission. Here, you know.
That I see. Ev- everyone gets notified at once about everyone. Us and whatever the other affected.
Exactly.
Um, you're right, that is fair.
Well, I mean, it's a small town. I mean, we just have a back and forth too. In other words, they, most of the people that apply to conservation commission have probably been. In their meetings pretty regularly, so they know what they're getting into. So it's not like it's going to be a secret candidate they've never heard of before. You know what I mean? Is that?
Right, yeah, no. Michael, I think Michael hit the nail on the head when he said, if somebody's interested in a committee, they should go and attend it.
Yeah.
Very important.
And and they have a cool thing, COMCOM, as you probably know, has this associate member position too, which I kind of like actually because it has someone in the wings there. Kind of that gets a sense of how much regulatory burden it is, but um.
And then runs away.
Well, well, you know, I I already told a few people, we can get Bento to order some handcuffs, so you're okay. Don't worry about that. But uh. You know, it's it's kind of a cool way to sort of be, uh, because it's a regulatory position where you need to take some courses and everything if you haven't had that. Background. So some of these committees, it's not as easy. So we appreciate what you're doing, Jean. Thank you.
I think we seem to be on a, on a good course here, and I think um. We have as close agreement as we'll get on this, and I I think I were, again, we're on the right course, and I like the idea of just one, uh, one release of all names at one time. All right, is there any more discussion here, at least amongst the board or Vicky?
I do have one other thing. It doesn't relate to this, though. I just want to, you know, because we're, as an FYI, because personnel is appointed by the select board. Um, I just wanted the select board to know that I've been approached by some citizens. Asking um if there is a way for the personnel board to get involved and look into. Potential ethics and open meeting law violations by members of the Sherburne, their uh regional school, Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. Particularly the Sherburne representatives, and I just wanted you to know that um I spoke to. With David's permission, I spoke to town council and um. They said that we could get involved with it if we just, if the board decides to, and we, I haven't spoken to any of the other board yet. Members yet, but I wanted to let you know that. This is what I've done so far because I've been asked to by some citizens, so. You know, we'll have a personnel meeting and decide whether we want to pursue it or not, but. Um, I checked with the legal counsel to see if we could even get involved, and they said you could if you voted so, so. We'll see, but it might be a moot point because it might already, people may have already filed. Um, ethics complaints and open meeting law complaints, so might be a moot point.
I don't want to have any discussion about this. It's not an agenda item. Yeah, but I already said to the board, I want to make sure, Vicky, maybe you and I talk and talk about maybe to make this agenda item for for the next meeting. It sounds a little too heavy to have even the slightest discussion on this.
No, I don't want, I didn't want to discuss it, but I needed, I had, I was, I needed to notify you that I had discussion with them.
I need one minute. My battery's running out my laptop. I'm sorry.
I think that's uh, we we're pretty much set with that item then, right, Vicky?
Yes, I think we.
But I'm going to redo it and I'll send it back out to you.
Thank you, Vicky and Nancy for your work, work on this. Work on this and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Me too. So select board reports, does anyone have any select board reports?
Yeah, I do.
Who's I?
Jay Eric's talking, but he's not on the screen. He's pointing at his laptop.
Well, I'll, I'll do mine first till you get back. So, so I I sent you guys the video. I did do the graduation ceremony last. Thursday, so it was pretty good. A great class and the rain held off, so we had an in-person graduation. Next thing is Monday night, I went to the Sherburne Community Center Foundation annual meeting. Um, so that was good. It was just interesting to see what, what they're doing and, you know, they're having a transition in leadership. I don't think they named it. I think I know who the new person is, but I think uh that the bill, what's his name, Devaney, I think is that his name, is stepping down. He may still be on the board, but I think he's going to, Frank can correct me here too, but. Um, and they also, one, one big event in the meeting was they gave me a dollar bill, which is their annual rent for the community center. So I gotta, I gotta come to see uh Deb and get a receipt to give to them for the dollar.
Actually have to give it to Heidi.
Yeah, is that how it goes to Heidi? I don't know, whoever I have to give it to, I gotta, I want to give them a receipt so that we know they paid their rent for this year.
All right, um, was there anything else?
Not for me.
I don't know if it's going to town administration report or or select board reports, but it's pretty recent. I know it's last minute, but other municipalities and private sector, um. Entities are recognizing it. I guess, is there been any decision on town hall if we're going to um. Um, be consistent with Governor Baker's uh uh legislation on Juneteenth, if on basically June eighteenth, many um. Uh, people like National Grid and the City of Framingham were actually declaring it a local holiday and uh. What do you call it? Uh, not expecting staff to attend or.
I'm not following you. Uh, what's June eighteenth? Oh, Juneteenth, okay, huh. I don't know. Closed right now, right?
I, it's technically closed.
Yeah.
Isn't Juneteenth, June nineteenth, and that's a Sunday and a Saturday anyway?
It's exactly what it is. I'll bring up, I know it's, it's eight days to go. It's last minute, at least bring up on people's radar. And it happened too quick to put an agenda item up, um, but at least, I at least wanted to raise it. And um, I know um in Framingham, there was a very quick decision was made to close city hall and uh relieve all employees. Has it been, has it been any discussion at administrative label uh level in Sherburne at all?
No, it hasn't been brought up and um, so we met today, it wasn't brought up. Not aware of anyone looking for it.
I do believe HBS, if uh, so it sounds like people will be working. I do think there should be some recognition that day and then maybe a consideration for future years.
So you're saying they're giving the Friday off since it falls on a Saturday? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, for not, um, actually, non bargaining, even some bargaining personnel, yep.
But they're giving them the Fri- the Friday for the uh Saturday holiday or Saturday um observance.
Yeah, National Grid is like giving it to like sixty eight hundred employees.
Okay.
Yep, so it's something that's uh momentum that's happening.
Yep.
All right, sorry, pipe all. How's it going? Okay, that's all I had.
I don't have anything.
All right. Um, no town administrator reports?
Yeah, I have a a couple of things. One, um, I asked Deb as the interim finance director. Uh, to create a re- a request form and process that mirrors the reserve fund transfer requests. Um, for processing the ARPA money. Uh, just to, so that we had something in place and she can start recording any requests that come in for that money. But that.
Is that a separate account, David? You know, when we had the CARES Act, we had a separate budget item for it.
Yeah, yeah, she, it'll be accounted for separately.
Okay.
Um, so people would uh have an expense that they want to incur. They would give her a heads up and she would note it on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And then once it's actually encouraged, she would process it and um and put it in that account. So right now you can see how much money was spent from the CARES Act and how much on the other one.
Yeah.
CARES Act is over.
Yep, yep.
So we got to take those amounts and um journal them over to the, to the ARPA money.
Yep.
And then uh, I think I mentioned one time about the movie or the TV show Dexter doing some filming. They're using a farm pond parking lot, so they are covering their permits. Um, plus donating five thousand dollars to the, to the ta- farm pond revolving fund. So, yeah, so that was good. We'll accept that officially when it actually comes in.
I think I mentioned in relation to that, we have an Eagle project building a new uh stand there and uh. A sign for the boat wash station.
Oh, yeah.
Melinda O'Neal's, Melinda O'Neal's son Brendan O'Neal, I just signed off on uh his uh Eagle project.
Oh, okay.
If I could just pick up a thing that was just mentioned by the town administrator, most communities have. Either a bylaw or a rural regulation or a policy on filming. And as part of that, they have something called a location fee. And the point of it all is that all this filming is not. A simple little project where one guy walks around with a iPhone and takes a few pictures.
No.
It's going to involve hundreds of people and and uh. Uh, all kinds of uh uh. Mobile homes that are used as studios, and they have to feed everybody and. It's, it's a big deal. It i- impacts the community. So you want to have some sign offs by the police, sign offs by the fire chief. You want to have a form. You want to have an application. You want to have essentially a permit process. We don't have that in this community, but there are. Wonderful models out there that other communities have, and it's something we should adopt and have in place. So that when the time comes. The five thousand dollar donation is not. Something we beg for or just drops into our, our laps. It's a fee. That is assessed and collected.
So we met.
Also want to make sure we're not overwhelming and make it so they go to Dover instead of Sherburne and. I want to drive commerce away by being. Open top.
And I don't know how many movies. I think the simplest thing to do here in Dexter, if we didn't like what we're doing, we'll just lock farm pond gates. That's the one thing we're good at.
Yeah. They were uh operating in Shellburne first before they were doing. This few days in Sherburne, so there was, there was some history that we had um had before and.
We, we actually did, we actually did receive the five thousand dollars today.
Oh, okay, good. So we used um, uh, we put together kind of like a, a movie staff team. That was police, fire, buildings, um, finance, me, um, public works. So that we could check out their maps and see exactly what their plans were and um. You know, advising on any road closures if they needed it, but they are going to pay all the bills of the details and then anything else that's needed, so. Um, this one is a very short shoot of a, of a matter of a few days, so. Um, it will be less impactful than maybe some of the movie type shoots that, that could happen. But I agree, Paul, that's what we'll um, we'll work on having something in place instead of negotiating an amount each time.
Just wait till we have a, a, a police chase being filmed. Where we supply the police cars, they get crashed and the.
I do have a serious question though. I was, I was, you know, joking about the whole locking gates thing, whatever else, but will this um. I just want to make sure this doesn't like impact us the towns use. Like it's not, it's not going to be on a Saturday at two o'clock when the entire town wants to use. Um, farm pond. I mean, that, that's the main thing I care about.
Now, that we have, um, we, Dave Bento and I had talked that there would be police at e- each end of the street if that was on those days. Um, and they would be allowing local traffic in and somebody would, with a sticker to come into farm, farm pond.
Oh, okay, people can still use it, okay. That, that, that's not, not that big a deal then. I thought you had maybe had to close, like literally they closed the parking lot for a few hours or whatever else.
We know that's not allowed in this town.
Okay, no, no, I I was kind of serious. I thought maybe, okay, okay.
We had, you know, we had, Paul can remember, I bet sixteen years ago, the movie Gone Baby Gone was filmed in town.
It was on Hollis Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. I think we have done enough to be dangerous. Anything else, David, with town administrator reports?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Um, if there's no further ado. Now, I can never remember if I make this one motion to close, another motion to open um executive session, but I will make it a single motion. I move that we close open session and move to executive session for the agenda items as previously read by the town administrator. As Chair ISO declare an executive session is necessary. We will, we resume to open session only to close the meeting in its entirety. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, George?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
Okay, I might as well. Um, if we stop recording, we are now in executive session.